Good morning. Call to order, the Supplemental Retirement Plan Board Meeting, August 21st, 2025. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute North Carolina's flag?
Pledge of Allegiance, flag of the United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of North Carolina, pledge the U.S. Constitution of loyalty and dignity.
All right. Thank you. All right. As a reminder, if anyone has public comments, sign up or email Patty Hall at Patty.hall@nctreasure.com. That's P-A-T-C-I dot H-A-L-L, nctreasure.com. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted online with the other board materials. I'll start with this one first. We ask that you please mute your phone or computer if not speaking. We will be taking roll call by name and for all votes, unless there's objection, emotion, and a second will be counted as yes votes. Board members, if you must leave the meeting at any point, please announce your departure. If you return, please announce your return. Well, these items will be reported in the meeting minutes. Likewise, please state your name for those online before speaking. Finally, texts or other recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on personal phones or public records, to the extent that they concern the meeting. Secretary, please call the rolls.
Treasurer Bryner?
Here.
Charlie Perouse?
Present.
Lorraine Johnson?
Here.
Lanier McRee?
Done.
James Richardson?
Here.
Bob Shea?
Here.
Raj Singh? Steve Bean? Steve Bean? Robert Hillman? Robert Hillman?
All right. Okay. Steve will record you as present. Please take a minute to review the agenda. Does anyone present have an actual potential or the appearance of a conflict of interest in any of these matters? There are none. First order of business is we received the reappointments for James Richardson and Bob Shea. So, thank you both for being here in person and thank you for your service. Next item of business is the consent agenda. The items to the consent agenda are as follows: minutes from the May 22nd, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting, the minutes from the July 10th, 2025 Audit Subcommittee Board Meeting, and the planned documents. Are there any requests from board to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular discussion items? There are no requests. The consent agenda items for the board are adopted as presented. So it's my pleasure to move on to the North Carolina Retirement Systems NAGDCA Award that you'll see in your materials. We received this award for National Retirement Security Month Campaign for the Health Income, Ongevity, and Legacy. H-I-L-L put four weeks in focus with content inspired by members of the North Carolina Retirement Systems. The award recognizes the brightest ideas and most innovative solutions from across the public sector in the promotion and awareness of retirement readiness, which is our central goal, planning and administration. It's truly an honor to be recognized. We thank the board for your contributions, the team for all that you did to put this in place, and we have shared a copy of the entry in the appendix. So, thank you to the team. Moving on to administrative matters, Jeff Hancock will give an update on the administrative fee reserve investment and annual audit.
Great, thank you. As you may recall, at our last board meeting, the board approved for staff to search for a higher yielding investment alternative for our fee reserves other than where it was currently invested, which was the stable value product. Staff did that research. We found V and Y EV Temporary Investment Fund as a suitable investment, and as of July 10th, we did move all the fee reserves over into that fund. About $9.1 million was moved over there. And just to, you know, to give you guys a sense of what we are picking up there, at the end of June, the yield was about 4.5% on that fund as compared to the 3.2% in the stable value fund, so about a point and a quarter pickup on that. Based on our balances, that's about $100,000 a year in extra income that we'll earn from making that change. So, thank you board for giving staff the approval to make that change. Moving on to the audit update, on July 10th, the plans met with our auditor UHY, who presented a clean, unmodified report. There were no material findings in that report. In addition to the financial statements, there were 25 employers that we did an audit on to check their compliance with the plan documents. That review found some minor errors, mainly where some employers did include ineligible pay codes as part of their compensation. Staff is currently working with those employers to determine the extent of that and to rectify those situations, and that's going to be something that we will work on over the next several months. I would like to thank our partners in the Financial Operations Division, who really does a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of the financial statement audit portion. So, thank you to all of the team members there that were part of that and for all that they did to make the audit successful. That's all I have, Treasurer, once there's any questions.
Certainly worth picking up that extra $100,000. So, thank you for your leadership on that. Let's move over to legal matters. You'll see this tab six, your materials, over to Regis.
Going on with the auditor. Our contract is up for renewal. We have a three, we have really a five-year contract. It's a three-year initial term with UHY, our vendor, coming out of our last RFP cycle. Then we have two one-year renewal options, so 2026 would be that first one-year renewal. That would be for the audit for the 2025 financial statements. We'll be up for our scheduled RFP in two years, although, once again, this is a renewal of the option of the board for next year. The total cost will be, for next year, would be $129,500, which is up $4,500 from this year. The, we split pursuant to our contract with Empower, we split the cost of the audit every year. Power puts $70,000 toward that, so our net cost would be $59,500. Our, the board's vendor selection policy requires the board to approve the renewal of our four, a contract for one of our four major vendors that includes the auditor. It's not allowed. Pause there if there are any questions.
Okay. If there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve the auditor contract? Don't move. Mr. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Johnson? Call the roll, please.
Treasurer Bryner?
Aye.
Charlie Perouse?
Aye.
Lanier McRee?
Aye.
James Richardson?
Aye.
Steve Bean? Robert Hillman? Does Steve raise his hand?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. Move on to the review of governance policies.
You have two governance policies before you for review today. Proxy voting policy and investment transaction disclosure policy. Before we move to the specifics of that, I'll give you a little bit of background. Three of the board's governance policies, the two before you today, as well as the manager selection policy, are based on the policies that the Investment Management Division has for the retirement systems. And the proxy voting policy, actually, the current one is actually the same as the one the treasurer's policy for the retirement systems, and it's been that way since at least 2017. Also, as you may be aware, the investment-
I didn't get that. Could you? No problem.
As you may be aware-
Could you repeat that for the bone lead?
The Investment Modernization Act was recently enacted, and you may recall at the last meeting, legislative staff from the departments here talked about the Investment Modernization Act, among other items that were at the General Assembly. That act was, has been, well, that bill was enacted since then, approved by the General Assembly, signed by the governor. And one of the things that it does is it establishes the North Carolina Investment Authority, which moves the investment fiduciary role for the pensions investments from the treasurer as an individual or as that office to a board similar to this board called the Investment Authority, North Carolina Investment Authority. And starting January 1, that board is going to, that investment authority is going to have the responsibility for the pensions, pensions investments. The department is working to get that board up and running, policies and the processes. A part of the meeting, Steve Bean asked a question about how this change in the investment fiduciary for the pensions will affect supplemental retirement plans and your role to support. The short answer is your role will not change. You are still the administrator and the fiduciary for the plans. You do that jointly pursuant to statute with the department. For example, the policies that you have before you today, well, as all the policies are your prerogative, you, as a board, and your predecessors have chosen to follow the retirement systems, treasurers, or get certain policies. You have adapted certain policies. You have, you've taken certain approaches and stepped with the retirement system. But, once again, you are an independent body and you have an independent fiduciary duty and independent fiduciary authority to act in regards to investments, policies, whatever, for the best interests of the participants in supplemental plans. So, before we consider the specific policy in front of you, let me pause and see if there's anything that Kevin or the treasurer wants to add or Steve wants to ask or any of the board members want to add.
I'm happy to add a few comments to that. So, the way that the new law is written is the two boards, the Supplemental Board, as well as the North Carolina Investment Authority Board, have a bilateral opt-in to have the new authority provide the same services to the Supplemental Retirement Board that previously the Investment Management Division's been providing. So, the, if the Supplemental Board would want the oversight of the investments and that support to continue from the North Carolina Investment Authority and the North Carolina Investment Authority Board wants to provide that service, then I think we pretty much are steady as she goes. But, we have our inaugural board meeting for the North Carolina Investment Authority, NCIA for short, coming on the 27th. And so, we have a quorum of the board seated and another two members that need to be confirmed. But, we're starting our standing up of the new organization. So, our thinking is either late this year in the November timeframe or early next year, we'll be coming with a proposal for this board around what the level of services would be, types of services. And then what the new law also requires is the fiduciary standards of care that apply to the North Carolina Investment Authority as it relates to any services that are provided to the supplemental retirement plans are the same high stringent standards of care, duty of loyalty, prudent expert as it relates to investment matters, appropriate diversification, and all of it has to be done in the interests of the participants, in their sole interest. So, none of that changes. It's really a matter of we're doing a reorganization within the department to create this new operating entity with more operating flexibility to be able to meet the needs over the long term of the retirement plan members, the other pools that we invest, state cash management plan, we have some other smaller pools of money as well that we invest. So, that's kind of the update. If you'd like to clarify anything.
Any questions? We're happy to take them.
No, sir.
Anything online?
Steve, did that answer your question that you posed prior to the board meeting?
Why don't we move to details if Steve has questions that we didn't answer? We'll get to-
So, turning to the policies, the two policies you have today. The first, the proxy voting policy is another step in trying to determine the best level of involvement with the plans and the proxy voting process. And what you have in your materials is the most recent step in that process. Once again, it's following what the retirement systems does through the authority of the treasurer. That policy has been reviewed for quite a while, but especially this year. And what you have in front of you is, or what you have in your materials, is the current version of that policy for the treasurer, for the retirement systems. It's an attempt, as you can see in that policy and in the memo I had on top of that, it's an attempt to focus proxy voting efforts in certain categories of proposals that are especially important to good corporate governance, while also recognizing that a particular vote, whether it's SRP's vote or the retirement system's vote, is unlikely in many situations to determine the outcome of the proposal or affect the value of the portfolio. It also continues the benefit of operational efficiencies between the retirement systems and SRP, as well as relying on a proxy voting vendor for the proxies that we continue to vote under the policy. The treasurer's policy is informed by the treasurer's statutory fiduciary duty, also by ERIS's proxy voting regulation. Now, that does not, that's not binding on the treasurer, not binding on SRP, that ERIS is a part of it, often a good go-by to use, often something we use both sides, pensions and supplemental retirement plans. The investment principles in the treasurer's policy seem to apply equally to SRPs, to the pensions. But, to come back to something that I said earlier, you don't have to follow the treasurer's approach on this or any particular policy. You can take whatever approach you think is best, whether it's continuing to do what we're doing and voting all things according to the proxy voting vendor, adopting this new approach from the treasurer, for the retirement systems, or a third option. And I'll pause there. Staff's recommendation is to continue to follow the retirement systems and what they do, but I'll see if there are any questions.
Okay. I hear none. Do we want to do this as a joint motion or?
We can do, we can do a joint if you'd like. The next is the investment transaction disclosure policy. This requires extensive disclosures from the investment manager. The goal is to identify any potential conflicts of interest, focus on transparency in the manager selection process, or if we have an amendment to an investment management agreement. As with the proxy voting policy, we follow closely what the retirement systems, what the treasurer does with retirement systems. We recently revised that policy for the retirement systems. Unlike the proxy voting policy, we can't just bring it over wholesale because there's different entities involved, but we adapt it. It's effectively, it's effectively the same. There'll still be robust disclosures. We've just tried to, we've tried to refine it to address the pushback that we've had from, well, lack of clarity in the current policy, where we have questions about something, will this apply to this? So, we've tried to focus it on and rethink about what we, what sort of disclosures that we actually are going to use. And so, but I'd say that substantively, it's the same as what we're doing now. You have a red line version in your, with some comments in your materials. Just highlighting three of the, or a couple of the changes. The disclosure form is just required for the manager. That does not stop Compliance Counsel, whoever that is, from asking for, if there happens to be a placement agent. I've been in this role for nine years. We haven't had a placement agent, a true placement agent on the supplemental side. We actually don't, we see a few of them on the pension side now as well. Also, part of the reason for changing some of what, refining some of what we're asking for. The, we're also not going to, no longer going to require Galliard to take that, you know, to apply this policy to the managers they hire. We can take the approach as we do on the pension side of, we hire the manager, they make the disclosures, and then we delegated them to act as a fiduciary. Once again, I'll pause there if there are any questions about changes to this policy.
Done for me? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the two governance policies?
This is Steve Bean. I'll make that motion, and I've finally gotten my audio fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Give a second.
Second.
We'll roll.
Treasurer Bryner?
Aye.
Charlie Perouse?
Aye.
Lanier McRee?
Aye.
James Richardson?
Aye.
Bob Shea?
Aye.
Raj Singh? Robert Hillman?
Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to the administrative update from our friends at Empower. Rob, Michael, and Jody. Tab seven of your-
Rob's going to kick us off today with a few comments.
Like I said, if I continue to visit, I need to earn my keep, so I thought I would. It'd just take a few minutes just to kind of make sure that everyone's aware, especially the board and also staff, that there's a number of thought leadership pieces that Empower prepares and does on a regular basis, considering now we're the largest provider of government retirement plans. There's some things, if you're not aware, and we can get some links and some things to the board, there's a regular video series now. We hired a new chief strategist. She was the former CIO at Morningstar, Martin Norton. Whenever there's a news that comes out, be it about the economy or about jobs, she's quickly doing videos online. Those videos are to help participants, to help our clients, and they actually have had a lot of great reporting out on them as well. So, we're going to make sure that you guys get links to those. You also have a newsletter called The Currency, which, again, doesn't sell anything, but it describes kind of somewhat complex and sometimes simple financial information that's suitable for participants and, again, for board members, clients, et cetera. So, we'll get you links to that as well if you're not subscribed to. We can make sure that happens. Also, you know, again, as a largest provider, we do a number of, there were a number of surveys and deep looks into our, into our, over, you know, we have almost 4 million participants on our platform in government. 2.8 million of those are active. So, I wanted to give you some highlights about the last study we just did. We just released one, we call it our '25 Study of 2024 Information, and it's actually, it's looking deep into our system at participants, so looking at what they do, not even what they say they do. So, some of it's insightful, so I thought I would share. It's a large study. I'm only going to pick probably four things just to share at this point, but I think it is insightful. First, good news is savings rates helped. So, people are at 6.4%. We've seen that across the board, even though '24 itself was a strange year. Participants have been staying the course. I think they've been getting the message finally in retirement plans not to change that. So, great news on that. And account balances, on average, have stayed the same as well. We think it's a testament to what we've all done as an industry, make sure people understand the importance of saving and staying the course. The central theme of this one was also about engagement. So, we wanted to see if there's people that are engaged. Engaged could mean they're logging into a website, they're calling the call center, obviously they're meeting with a counselor. We consider those people to be engaged. We wanted to see how engaged people are faring versus those that kind of just, you know, set it and forget it, don't do much of either. We found out that if you're an engaged participant, you've saved nearly 80% more than those that are not, and your account balances reflect that. That's a savings rate, 160% more on average. So, people that we see that are engaged tend to save more, have more saved, and especially folks that have, there's a thing that we call our dashboard, allows participants to put in their outside assets as well, so they can link their retirement, other retirement plans, outside assets. Those people we've seen, instead of that 6.4% average savings rate, they have an average savings rate of 9% on average. So, there's a correlation between kind of those folks and what they're saving. More on that, I'll switch topics. The next is, we looked at generations. Everybody's talking about, you know, especially everyone's, what are the millennials doing, right? So, obviously, we found that Gen X and Boomers are by far saving the most, and a lot of them, this time is there, they've got to. What was surprising was that we found that millennials are actually doing pretty well. As a matter of fact, they're doing better than Gen Z, their kind of older counterparts. So, there's this little gap of Gen Z that I think that we've, as an industry, we need to get a little better at kind of moving them along. Millennials seem to be doing okay, but there is a ray of hope because where Gen Z is engaged, again, they're doing something versus nothing, they are actually saving and have account balances similar to others that are engaged. So, it's kind of like a little bit of a wake-up call for us in the industry to say, Gen Z's not a lost cause. You just got to, you just really have to engage with them. I thought it was pretty telling. Additionally, to get everyone to save time, so we also found, and this isn't going to be a surprise to Jody, but people that engaged with a live person, with our retirement planning counselors, had a savings rate 45% higher than those who didn't, and balances 125% greater, because, again, we track who meets with a counselor. This was, I thought this was interesting, 30% fewer hardship withdrawals. So, if someone has had a one-on-one meeting with a counselor, again, they're more like, they save more, higher account balances, and this one I loved, which is 30% less hardship withdrawals. And finally, you know, we had to obviously include this, but folks that are in a professionally managed advice solution, they also had 28% higher contributions, 56% higher account balances for using those services. So, that's all I'll go over at this point. It's a larger study. We can get you the link to that as well. That we'll share. It's, we do one every year. There's also the past three are available to link to. I think one was, we actually asked people questions, which is kind of interesting, but this was more of just a deep dive into our data. Any questions? If not-
Did I earn my keep? Thank you.
You're invited back.
Thank you for your time.
You get lunch today, Rob.
All right. Patty, for going over a few of the quick-hit metrics, we'll start on slide four of the report. So, overall, at a high level, really strong year-over-year asset growth across the plans and a lot of really good metrics. If we look at page four, you know-
We've, we've, there's also the past three are available to link to, I think. One was, we actually asked people questions, which is kind of interesting, but this was more of just a deep dive into, into our, our data. Any questions? If not? Did I earn my keep? Thank you. You're invited back. Thank you for your time. You get lunch today, Rob.
All right, Patty, for going over a few of the quick hit metrics, we'll start on slide four of the report. So overall, at a high level, really strong year-over-year asset growth across the plans, and a lot of really good metrics. If we look at, look at page four, you know, if I had to summarize this, just looking at the data, and sometimes you have to squint your eyes to really appreciate everything that's on here. At the highest level, total combined plan assets are now at 18.83 billion. That's an 11.2% increase year-over-year. We're now exceeding 321,000 participants. That's about a 1.6 year-over-year increase. And then again, we continue to just reach higher and higher levels on the average monthly contribution rate, which is now 3.303, over $303 a month, and that's a 4.32 year-over-year increase, and then very consistent in terms of the, the active participation rate. On page 11 and 12, we spike out the 401K plan on, on page 11. A 13.77% year-over-year increase, the average, the average account balance is up to fit just north of $56,000. That's a nine, over a 9% year-over-year increase. And then on page 12, the 457 plan, again, strong growth there as well. That plan is now over $2 billion. This dates me a little bit, but I've worked on these plans now for over 12 years, but I mean, the 457 plan, when I started, was I think just north of $500 million when I first came down here in, in 2013 for the first board meeting. And the average account balance is, is up 8.71% year-over-year in the 457 plan. Page 17 and 18, Patty, is where I'll go next. This is contributions. For the 401K plan, first on, on 17, I'm looking at the bottom chart there. Really strong total contributions year-over-year is up 8.32%. Roth contributions continue to nicely increase as well as more participants take care of that, or contribute to that, I should say. And then, again, really strong growth in employer contributions too, up 9.11%. 457 plan tells a similar story, with the total contributions up 4.4% year-over-year, and Roth contributions continue to increase there as well, up 12.54% from the previous year. We'll next jump to slide 31 and take a look at, you know, some of the headwinds that we know we face in terms of distributions. Good news on looking at distributions is, is that year-over-year, where we stand right now, we're actually down 13.98% from a dollar perspective in terms of distributions out. However, I think that's a little bit of a misleading, because if you look then at the chart below, the number of folks that have taken disbursements is actually up, they're just lower amounts. So, and then Mr. Treasurer, at the last meeting, you asked us to stay, to take a look at, keep our eyes on hardship withdrawals, especially with like, all the activity in the western part of the state. Those are up, so those have jumped considerably. And then loans are slightly up as well. So we have, we do have some headwinds there. I don't think that it's, you know, anything too alarming, but just that trend does continue of folks either taking a loan or, or pursuing a hardship.
No change quarter over quarter.
Yep.
I have a question. What is the average age of the participant at this point? And is the average age increasing? I don't know, I'm not as clear on, I don't know where all the numbers were.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a while since we've looked at that. I, I want to say that the average age is, is somewhere like in the early 40s, the last time we looked at it. So we have a huge baby boom population exiting the plan, but in the last three years, we've had, we continue to have record-setting years in terms of enrollments, and this, this year, not to steal your thunder, we're on another record-setting year for enrollment. So every year, we're adding about 25,000 new participants through the plans. But we also have some percentage also leaving, but we're seeing steady 1% to 2% growth in the total participant population. So new participants are still bringing in new lifeblood. However, the folks that are leaving the systems are the, are the folks with the high average account balances. But all that being said, you're still seeing, in terms of average account balances, you're still seeing growth there too.
I'm just thinking about the amount of the distributions and going up and down, and whether that's simply gonna be a function of.
I think with your.
Baby boom.
Yes, I think with a mature plan like yours, that is definitely what we see trend-wise with other state plans of typically net negative cash flows right now because of those higher account balances and those large people starting to separate from service.
So we look at our book, again, those same numbers we looked at. There's 2.6 mil, so we have 3.8 million participants on our, on our platform. 2.6 million of those are active. That means the difference, there are people that are no longer, most of them are typically in a government plan, especially they're likely retired, not contributing. So they're, so we're saying they're 2.6 are only contributing. So it, it is a trend, is where Mike's going, there's no doubt. So part of our goal, and I know your goal as a plan, is to, when those people stop contributing, they stop working, to not have them just leave, right? So part of, part of the goal is making sure they stay in plan. So that's a number we look at a lot, and that difference between who is in plan, not contributing, those are, those are folks, they're not going to work every day, they're, they don't always get quick access to a counselor. That's a harder group to make sure we're getting to, make sure they stay in plan.
Lorraine, to kind of add on to that, this is something that I, you know, watch, because this, you know, one of my larger concerns, but about a third of the plan balances are with people aged 65 and older.
Where the money is.
Yeah. So, you know, seeing the money go out or being in, being in a negative cash flow, you, you kind of speaks to where, where the money is held, and so that's certainly one of our concerns, is that much of the money being with, with folks of that age or older.
And then we look at even how the money goes out, right? Because this was a retirement plan. We want people to use it for retirement. So it's not like we.
So that, that's.
No, absolutely. It's not like we say, we, we want to leave it here forever, but we'd like to see it come out in, in their systematics, right? So they could use it as, as income, replacement of income over time, and not just move their money wholesale out to God, goes God knows where. So we look at it, not that, you know, again, we want you to retire, we want you to use it, but if we'd like to have it be used responsibly, if not, that's our goal.
Putting a fine point on that, as we look at the rollover table here.
Slide 36. Yeah.
What's your guesstimate or estimate even of the average fee structure where we're rolling to, where our members are rolling to?
Yeah, I mean, so typically, in a retail environment, if you're going to like an Edward Jones, for example, you're probably paying, depending on how much you're taking in, you're probably paying around 100 basis points at least for that, for those services, if not more, depending, it's some type of a tiered. Yeah.
Sometimes you've put in here, and I, I'm sorry, I, I did read all of it, didn't retain all of it. Sometimes you put in.
I didn't read, read.
Gosh, I, I, I did, it's small print. Sometimes you do put in as, as one of the pages where the money is going.
Yep.
And, well, I mean, specifically to which firms, again, someone this far away.
Page 36.
Thank you, thank you. So.
Yeah, the top, the, the top quarter over quarter, like the top three hardly ever change in terms of where, where we see the most activity.
Because the ones going to, let's say, Vanguard are most likely paying a much lower percentage than 1%. So there is, there are probably some here, you know, not paying that kind of a.
Yeah, no, we don't expect, we don't expect there to be none, by any means.
And just, and just, I want to make sure, because Jeff, you and I talked about this too. When you see like Empower Trust companies listed on there, just for the record, that is money that rolls over to another retirement plan that Empower has. So like, maybe someone used to work for the state, and now they work for, I don't know, State of New Jersey or someone else, but Empower's also the record keeper there. That's what that line means. So we would all, we also like, you know, obviously, Empower is similar to Fidelity, we're in the IRA business as well, but that would, that's captured under another line item, and that's never risen to the level of activity there. But I just wanted to clarify for the record that that's not leaving your plans to go to like our IRA product. That's someone that's like, working now at a new, a new company or a new entity that also has their retirement plan, and they're just looking to consolidate their, their assets.
And Lorraine, one thing I'll, I'll point out is, I don't know how they get all of the email addresses, but Edward Jones has been very good about sending out unsolicited emails to people's inbox, and so we don't know how many people might read that, you know, respond, set up a consultation with them, and then are encouraged to.
Yeah, and Edward Jones is the most famous example that, like, I can remember in my time on the plans, where somehow an advisor found out where we were doing a retirement seminar, and they went and put their cards on all the windshields outside.
Wow.
After your participants left to then call them. So they're very, there's a few of them that are clearly very savvy. The, what concerns me the most is, is we'll run into this a few times a year, where people will roll their money out, so they're gone, they can't come back in, and they worked with an advisor, and then they're like, oh, wait, I was, you're telling me that I was Bailey vested? So it's like, you know, they don't understand all of the rules, and they, they lose those, those tax benefits that they would have had if they would have stayed in, stayed in the plan, so.
Government employees, it's unfortunate, but there's a lot of data available, your state, but a lot of states I work with, it's, it's out, you just search for it. You can look up a person's name, you can see their phone number, email, in some cases, salaries. I mean, I think there's too much readily available information that people can access for just a search.
So I'll, I'll close my comment on this. I won't do the hard sell, Jeff, but we do have additional services, advisory services we can offer that, you know, if participants want to roll their money out, where we can make them go through an advisory consultative session, and maybe they still end up leaving, but we can put them through that advisory service model to just make sure that it's truly an apples-to-apples comparison, and they're, they're hopefully making a better informed decision. Because right now, we don't, we don't have those services on, so if we get a, if we get a form, or someone calls in to say, I want to roll out, we, we process it for them.
Form decision, people support. We do still have people who roll out, who think they have to.
For sure.
I'm, I'm sure that, that's across the government industry, because years ago, that's.
Because even with all the collateral we've created over the years to like, make sure that folks, we hit them over the heads with campaigns, it still happens.
We did a survey at State of New Jersey, and of people that left and took their money, the number one reason they said, still, after all these years, was I thought I had to. I mean, I was gonna bang my head against the wall, but.
I mean, it's, makes you feel like you're a failure in your career, right?
Exactly, exactly. People still think, yeah.
And part of that is a problem with the compliance departments of the broker-dealers. I mean, I, I know with NFS, if, if you were rolling, and it's supposed to be pretty much industry-wide, if as a rep, you were recommending that someone roll out of a plan, any plan, you have to.
Document.
Put on the, on the form specifically, what are the fees for where they are here? What are the fees for where they're going, you know, and a whole good long paragraph in sentences rather than pulling points of why are you doing?
Yeah, why is it suitable? Why is it in their best interest?
Yeah, why is it, yeah, suitable, or, you know, yeah, because there's a fiduciary responsibility there as well.
I'll wrap up my section now, and turn it to Jody for an update for the, the dedicated reps across the state.
You didn't steal all of my thunder.
Typically, I do.
Just a little bit.
Between the both of us, we do.
Well, just dovetailing what, first of all, good morning, everyone. It's, it's very nice to be with you here. Dovetailing what Rob started off with, which was the whole engagement story. We see the difference that an engaged, the different experience that an engaged participant has versus an unengaged participant. And we measure participant engagement through a couple of different lenses, but one of those, one of those lenses is by how many people are meeting with us on a regular basis. So if you look at page 38 in your, in your report there, you'll see our engagement results for the counselor team through the end of second quarter, as well as just for second quarter. So it's the number of people we've met with and how they interacted with us. In second quarter, we met with over 23,000 folks, either in individual meetings or group meetings, which brings our year-to-date total engagements to 43,500 engagements. It's about 4% higher than where we were last year, and it is the highest year-to-date number that we've had since the pandemic. So we are seeing engagement growing with the plan. Initiatives that helped us boost these figures included a special focus this spring on state agency personnel, as well as outreach to employers who were having open enrollment events during the springtime for their benefits enrollments that were renewing July 1. So it's great when we can get in and be included with those initiatives. It's another way to get in front of those employees. The team is averaging about 200 group meetings and 1,800 individual meetings on a monthly basis, and about half of those meetings are occurring virtually. So half on-site, in-person, and the other half engaged virtually. By and large, the, the individual engagements often are incurring, are occurring virtually. So right around 70% of individual meetings happen in that way. We also meet with employers to plan for employee education and to encourage best practices around plan design and operation. And in second quarter, the team had almost 1,000 employer meetings, and we're averaging about 325 a month there. Another lens of measurement for us is plan enrollments, which Mike mentioned earlier. Second quarter produced about 6,200. This is on page 39. Second quarter produced about 6,200 enrollments, and year-to-date, we're almost at 13,000, which is our best year-to-date figure in plan history. So we're, we're doing really well. We're reaching new folks through participation in new employee orientations, and as I mentioned, those open enrollment meetings. Not only are we seeing growth in enrollments, we're seeing growth in the actual number of contribution rate increases. Those are up by 4% year-over-year, and the average contribution, as Mike mentioned, is up as well over last year. So we're seeing good indicators across the board there. One reason we see such robust activity is because we've got over 20 employers that have implemented plan design enhancements, which is another thing that the counselor team works with the employers on. This helps them bolster their benefits package, but it also helps their employees achieve greater retirement security. And if you'll flip on your, flip to page 40 on your report there, pages 40, 41, and 42 give you the detail on the, on the employers that have implemented changes through the end of June for 2025. And that includes adopting the plan, so adopting the 401 or adopting the 457, increasing or initiating an employer contribution program, and as well, the auto escalation program. So these employers are taking that initiative, and these employers represent about 10,000 employees, which obviously are, are going to have better retirement options available to them as a result of these actions. And I'll just close that, giving you a little tease for third quarter, because I'm really excited about what we're seeing already for third quarter in this regard. So I look forward to coming back in a couple of months and sharing that detail with you. Any questions for us about, about the engagement or the plan initiatives?
So just one, did you say 70% of the visits are virtual?
Individual visits, yes. Individual consultations. It's a very popular method of engaging, because oftentimes, they can include a spouse or significant other, a parent, sometimes if we're dealing with, you know, a recent college grad or something.
It's more private, too.
Yeah, it's more private.
The meeting in the cafeteria, in the lounge, isn't always that private, where you know when it's gonna be one-on-one, it's virtual, it's that kind of. It's that kind of where they want to be and could be in their car, could be.
Yeah, it sometimes is.
Private. So they're more willing to even give more information.
Then how, how does that tie with the data that you've mentioned earlier that the most successful people were the people that be? Was it one on one, face to face, not one on one?
No, no, sorry. We call one on, anymore since COVID, everything one on one to us is whatever way one on one is.
So those people are.
Considered absolutely, oh, absolutely. Anymore. Again, we're seeing much more of that because it's on their terms.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Last comment I'd make is I know a year ago, some of the call center stuff was challenged and we gave you a hard time about that. I just want to say thank you for rectifying all that. Thank you for what we see statistically and level of service being exceptional. So we really appreciate that.
Yeah. So I, I, I chose not to, Rob and I were talking about this last night. I chose not to bring it up because I didn't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Sure.
But we're very happy that like some of the hiring that we've done, the training that we've done in order to pay dividends. But also we saw, we're continuing to see a lot more web activity with your participants. So you'll notice there was a slightly less calls in last quarter. So we'll see.
The volatility has helped a bit. So I, I don't want to claim complete victory.
Again, we did. But we're very happy with, we're very happy with where the numbers.
Good story. That's a good story.
Why don't we carefully?
Take a compliment.
Take it on.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Now let's move on to the investment update. Elizabeth Hood and Weston Lewis, the second quarter investment performance report. Callum, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, members of the board. I'm Weston Lewis. Elizabeth Hood here. I'm going to go over a little bit of performance and discuss the capital markets environment. What drove equity fixed income returns for the quarter? Hopefully that will provide some sort of context as to how your managers performed in this environment. I'll start with just saying, we're going to, the first page of the capital markets overview. Four of the. Yes, that's the one. Actually one, one before that, Patty. Thank you. I'll just say what a quarter it was. We had, we started with liberation day on April 2nd. Markets responded swiftly, very negatively initially. And then as, as pauses were announced, markets responded in a very different way, very positively to, to that news. While what happened in equity markets tended to get most of the headlines. Really what happened in bond market was, in the bond markets was what got policymakers attention. Namely, the 10-year treasury yield yields shifted from about 4.2% in a four-day span up to about four and a half percent. That hasn't happened since the global financial crisis. That's steep of a, of an increase. So as, as you're looking at this, you know, that, that certainly, you're looking at some of the managers, some of them were challenged by that risk on environment. It wasn't that they were doing necessarily anything different. It was, it is just focusing on, on what their discipline is. A lot of the, as we look at US equity markets, a lot of the same themes that we've talked about over the past quarters, feels like past couple of years, past couple of decades, large cap growth, large beating small, growth beating value. You see there on the top right of the page, that 17.8% return of the Russell 1,000 growth. That is more two times, more than two times the return of the small cap, a very respectable eight and a half percent return for, for small cap. And then as you look at growth over value, the large cap growth, 17.8% versus 3.8, a very meager 3.8% return for the Russell 1,000 value. We mentioned this last quarter, I would just underscore it again, is that the operational performance of a lot of these large and mega cap companies remains very good. They are generating earnings. They are generating cash flow. However, the more concerning part is they're also increasing those earnings or the price to earnings multiples. So the valuations, the, what investors are willing to pay for a dollar's earnings for some reason is far more attractive in large cap than it is in small cap. And we're, we're getting to historical valuation spreads to where large cap companies are, are trading at far more of a premium than they have historically to small cap companies. And the same can be said of value, of growth versus value. That currently the forward P E of the Russell 1,000 growth is around 30.1 times earnings. Whereas the Russell 1,000 value is 17.2 times. That 57% discount for value is far above what we've seen over the last several decades. So anyhow, it, it just, you know, is worth some caution here. Moving on to non-US on the next page. As good as year-to-date returns are for US equities, non-US actually still maintains a slight advantage, performance advantage over US equities. Key themes here being the US dollar. We've seen a long trend and dollar strength. That seems to have turned around for the year to date. The US dollar has fallen about 10% relative to a basket of other currencies. A lot of that has to do with some uncertainty around where our policy, you know, where our trade policy is going to be, where Fed policy is going to be. So just that, keep that in mind. I, I would also point out some other things here on this page that we, we pushed for small cap in non-US. So we, we, several years ago, we, or three or four years ago, we changed the structure to include non-US small cap. It's a bigger portion of the market outside, outside the US. So for the, for many years, small cap has underperformed outside the US as well. So for non-US securities, finally, small cap did show some sort of performance advantage. And then you see that for both the quarter as well as the year to date. And then in fixed income world, I, I would just say on the next page, the yield curve twisted a bit. It steepened. Moving back to a more normally shaped yield curve, we would argue. Credit spreads post liberation day, they widened for what felt like about 10 minutes and then they narrowed back in. We, we remain at historic tight. So managers that are taking on some additional credit risk tend to have been rewarded in this environment for taking on that, that credit risk. But as you look at the quarter return as well as the year return for the Bloomberg aggregate, where your, where most of your core fixed income assets are invested, 6.1% for a calendar year or for a last 12 months return is respectable for, for fixed income. Moving on to how your participants are allocated here on page four. I'll just say that the assets went from 17.5 billion to 18.8 billion. That's a $1.4 billion increase in market values from the last quarter. So a very strong quarter for results here, driven mostly by investment gains. You see that in that investment return column there. And then as you look at the net new investments, I'll just point out that sometimes this is skewed by goalmaker rebalancing. So you see a large reduction in the international equity fund of around 129 million and a large gain in the large cap passive as well as a, a large new investment in small and mid-cap equity. That is likely, just given how non-US equity performed in the first quarter, catching up, rebalancing some of those accounts. And, but the, I guess the ones to asterisk here are the ones that are not in Goalmaker. So you can see those flows, those are purely participant driven. So fixed income passive, international passive, spend cap passive, the movement's a little bit more modest. The one that was maybe a little bit more material is the large cap core equity fund. Again, this is not in Goalmaker, so no Goalmaker rebalancing. So you did see some movement of participants to the tune of around negative 44 million. Then moving to page five, this is the performance that your participants see. So this is at the option level and we would just maybe painting in a bit of a broad brush here. All of your passive options are performing in line with their respective indices, tracking their indices at a low fee. That's what they're meant to do. There's a little bit more noise around international passive, some, excuse me, around the inflation responsive fund. Especially as it relates to the international, there's something called fair value pricing. The indices print at one period in the day and then the US markets close later and the valuation is later in the data is used. So there's a little bit of noise quarter to quarter, but in line with what we see with other funds here. And I would just point out the inflation responsive fund, not so much for performance. They are in the process of making some changes and we'll see some of that as we go through some of the glide path analysis that we go through. But this is used within Goalmaker and they're making some changes. Namely, they are reducing their exposure or eliminating their exposure to full duration tips and moving that to more intermediate, short-term duration. So you all already have that tips option for participants and within Goalmaker as well. So just something worth noting as you all reevaluate what goes into Goalmaker and what allocations are there. They're also adding listed infrastructure. This we think is a positive. As you think of real asset funds and the tools in their toolbox, certainly listed infrastructure is a useful investment that can help offset some, some inflation pressure. So both near term and long term. And so those are the things that we would mention about the passive. Moving down to the active, we would just say, all the options did actually quite well. Save one, the not, the small cap, smaller mid-cap equity fund, that remains a challenge. So what is happening in small cap here? This option, you'll recall, has seen the most change out of all of your options over the past five years. There have been a couple of manager changes. There have been some structure changes. But we, we do like where you are positioned. We would say your biases in this small and mid-cap fund lean in a couple of directions. Number one, all of your managers have some sort of valuation discipline that they, that they employ. The second thing is they tend to be a little bit higher quality. So if you look at this option versus index, this option is going to have a basket of securities that has higher return on equity, lower debt to, lower debt equity, higher earning stability. So those, those things we would consider to be good things. However, that is not what the market wanted in this quarter. The market wanted more, you looked at what rallied the most. Were, were companies with that, with the lowest return on invested capital, lowest return on equity. Generally, the ones that have low and no earnings rallied the most. So as you think of the companies that are most shorted in the index, those also outperform the index. So just given how your managers are positioned and what your biases are there, we think that the, the performance below the index here certainly makes sense and are underperforming for the right reasons. On page, Jordan, my participants. Okay. Bye. Sorry. Oh, sure. Moving to page seven, talking about your underlying managers, I'll paint in some broad strokes here. First, I'll, I'll mention as, as good news, we have ridden a bit of a roller coaster with Sands Capital. 2021 and 2022 were very challenged calendar years for Sands. On the heels of 2020, which was a huge year for Sands. They certainly gave a lot of that back and of their relative performance. Our message to the board at the time was to remain patient with Sands. It continues to be the message. We thought that there, this, the rally would come a lot sooner than it did. So they have really tested our patience, but you'll note that over the last quarter, outperforming the index by about 10%. This is what we would expect with Sands. They do tend to be a more volatile manager. So they're, as they're rolling off some of those bad years in 2022, 2021, that three-year number has certainly shown very, you know, shows very strongly here. But on the less positive side, Macquarie, we'll talk, Chris and team are going to talk about changes there. But that one has continued to disappoint. We'll talk about the rationale for making the change in a little bit. Moving to page nine. Excuse me. Well, just for the international equity fund, pleased to see that all the managers are performing, outperforming their index, ranked generally favorably relative to peers. So won't spend much time on that. And then small and mid-cap, consistent theme, all under the index here for the quarter. So, and a challenge performance here for the year.
Thank you, Treasurer. So the next two items, we're going to have the Macquarie.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt real quick. This is Lanier McCray. I need to step away for 15, 20 minutes. So I'll be right back.
So we will be talking about the Macquarie termination recommendation, followed by the replacement for Macquarie, which is Boston Partners. So I'll go through the Macquarie recommendation. I'll pass it over to Chris to go through the Boston Partners recommendation. And after that, we'll, we'll ask the board to take action on those two items. So as a background, Macquarie manages approximately 18% of the US large cap white label fund. They're one of two value managers, as you've seen, the other being Hotchkiss. And they're offset by our two growth managers, Sands and Loomis, along with BlackRock managing the liquidity piece and the passive portion of the large cap white label fund. And as a couple of the board members may recall, during the first quarter of 2024, we recommended that Macquarie be placed on the watch list and the board approved that recommendation and then they've been on watch since that time. At that time, we discussed that the main drivers for placing them on watch were really threefold. Poor performance, significant strategy outflows and performance of, and changes to the investment team, especially since the, the transition from the founder of the strategy that happened in 2019. And unfortunately, since that time, we've, we've continued to, to see them struggle. Things have not improved since, since they went on watch. And at this point, we're, we're recommending moving off from Macquarie and terminating that strategy with, with. If you take a look at slide two of the memo, you can see some of the performance. Performance, as, as was mentioned, continues to struggle. Strategy is underperformed its benchmark, really for all time periods that, that, that we measured through June 30. You know, the relative performance has really been driven by the significant short-term underperformance. You know, if you look at slide, or on page three on the top, the chart that shows the growth of the dollar chart, you can really see that, you know, they were really inception today, the, the strategy was keeping up with or exceeding the benchmark all the way up through really 2022 time period. Entering 2023 and then into 2024 and to current, you can really see that gap between the orange and the blue line, which is, you know, the Russell 1,000 value on the orange line and, and the Macquarie strategy on the, on the blue line. So you can see that gap really grow and the significant outperformance we've seen just continues since really in the last three years or so. In addition to that, we've continued to see strategy outflows. You can see on the bottom chart on page three that AUM has decreased from more than 20 billion in 2021 to south of 5 billion out of about four and a half billion on June 30. So, you know, one of the things we, I think when we put them on watch, they were at about 11 billion. Right at the be, I guess around, you know, the beginning of 2024. So we've continued to see outflows through the first half of this year. Strategy has lost eight accounts for about 1.8 billion. So that continues to be a concern as well. And then on top of those two items, performance, strategy outflows, you know, we continue to see organizational concerns both within the team as well as the organization as a whole. So we've, they've had, they've continued to have departures on the, on the investment team where they've had three additional. where they've had three additional folks leave in the last year. And then in addition to the team changes in Q one of this year, the sale of Macquarie Asset Management, their public markets business anyways, was, was announced to Nomura. And given recent turnover at that strategy level, you know, this added layer of additional kind of ownership change raises concerns about the long term viability and success of the strategy as a whole. So for these reasons, you know, I, I think, you know, it's, it's time to cut ties with Macquarie and recommend terminating the strategy and replacing them with, with Boston Partners, which Chris will go through in, in a minute. So happy to dig into any of this further if folks have questions or address any other items related to Macquarie before I pass it to Chris.
I did have a question. What is the process and I should probably remember this. What is the process for determining how long we, we let a manager be on the watch list? Because by the time we put them on the watch list, they've been underperforming for a while, probably. I mean, it could just be organizational concerns, but frequently it's performance.
Correct.
And then we wait another year and a half. And I'm not criticizing that. Sometimes you just, you know, you're patient with a manager and a lot of times that's turns out to be good and sometimes, you know, not so much. So what is the procedure exactly for determining how long we have a manager on?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, there's no set time. I mean, I think it's really depending on the manager itself. Again, when you put them on watch, yeah, it depends on the reason you're putting them on watch. You, you want to make sure you, you give them enough time to be able to turn things around and hopefully, you know, we have enough faith in them that they'll do that. You know, when it becomes apparent that, you know, a change is needed, then we also have to do a search to try to find a replacement, right? So I think in this case, you know, around the beginning of, of the year this year, it became pretty apparent that we're got, we would probably be recommending a change. So, you know, we began a search in February for, to find a, a potential replacement for Macquarie. And, you know, it's taken, you know, and obviously we're, we're continuing to monitor them at this, as, as we go along and, you know, see if, if we, we feel like things are, are turning to the positive. But in this case, you know, we, we've seen the continued deterioration of, of really all the, all the components we really strongly look at when we're evaluating a manager. So, I mean, you know, I would say, you know, you probably want to give them at least a year in general. But there's no real hard rule around, you know, how long that they'll, they'll be on watch.
Right, because some, sometimes there are good reasons why they're, and clear reasons why they're underperforming. And you give them time to, to turn around. This one, yeah, but you want to give management a chance to get a grip on things. But now management seems to be bailing. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this one's a pretty.
Thank you.
Pretty clear case in my mind. I mean, they're not usually, a lot of times it's a very difficult decision whether we, we go this road. I mean, I think this one became pretty apparent that, you know, that it's, it's time. So. Yeah, again, there's no real hard set rule in terms of time, but kind of where we are. So.
Okay, thank you.
True. Any other questions or comments around Macquarie? All right, well, I'll pass it over to Chris Bird here to, to go through the process for, for Boston Partners and kind of how we ended up with them as a recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Good morning, everyone. Yeah, before I get into the details, kind of want to reiterate, you know, why this matters, right? Our goal always is to deliver strong, consistent retirement outcomes for participants. Large cap value is a foundational piece of our white label fund, one of just two value allocations. So when it underperforms or falters during style rotations, our members feel it directly. And so that's why this search was not just about finding a capable manager. It really was about finding the right partner. One with a philosophy and process that can endure market cycles, adapt during regime shifts and avoid pitfalls that historically hurt value mandates. And so as I walk through this diligence process and our ultimate recommendation of Boston Partners, I want you to hear through that lens, you know, this is about consistency, adaptability and protecting our participant outcomes. So going in this search, we kind of knew the pitfalls of just the, the value space and traditional value managers. They have an overall over reliance on fundamentals that can lead to value traps. They have rigid frameworks that lag when markets rotate or momentum leads. It can be slow reaction to new information, missing inflection points like COVID, inflation spikes. And they can be reluctant to using quantitative tools, leaving blind spots in risk oversight. These kind of weaknesses shaped our diligence. And so we were looking for a manager that, you know, could a manager be disciplined yet adaptable? Could they preserve style purity, but also avoid that rigidity? And could they build a process that's bigger than just one individual, mitigating that key man risk? And so through our screen, you know, we screened over a hundred managers, Callan and staff. We narrowed down to seven quarter finalists. Then three semifinalists came to Raleigh that we met with. And then finally, two finalists we met with onsite in Boston. And after that entire process, one firm stood apart the most and that was Boston Partners. And so I'll give you a little background of Boston and then talk about the clear choice of why it stood apart. So Boston Partners, that's the name, the trace, it's founded in nineteen ninety five, headquartered in Boston. It manages over a hundred and sixteen billion in assets, equity assets. They're owned by a parent company called Oryx, but they operate with full independence. Their flagship strategy is that large cap value product that we're, we're looking at. It manages over forty two billion dollars. So we talked about Macquarie had twenty billion, now they're about five billion. So that right there clearly, this is not a general, you know, firm just dabbling in value, right? Like this is a, you know, a, a value specialist with deep scale, process integrity and institutional alignment. Leadership for Boston Partners is anchored by Josephine, the CIO, David Cohen and Joshua White, PMs. Mark Donovan recently retired as a PM for that strategy. We believe that was handled seamlessly. He was replaced by Joshua White, who joined the firm back in two thousand and six. Actually, you know, like I was saying, grew up inside the firm and distinguished himself as a portfolio manager. Is now actually the co-chief investment officer of the firm. While still young by industry standards, his rapid rise reflects the culture of homegrown talent, accountability and renewal. The average PM tenure there is nearly three decades. So many began as analysts at Boston Partners, which again was a positive sign for us. Their compensation is deferred and tied directly to the strategy itself. So it aligns the team with the client outcomes as well, which for us, that's a process driven approach and not a personality driven culture, which I think is very important. At the heart of Boston Partners' philosophy is what they call a three circle framework. Every investment that gets into the portfolio has to clear these three tests. Attractive valuation is the stock cheap relative to intrinsic value. Strong fundamentals is the business sound with durable earnings power and positive momentum. Are earnings and price trend confirming the thesis? For me, in my opinion, what I think makes Boston Partners kind of rare in this field from a traditional value standpoint is the use of that positive momentum circle. Momentum is almost never embedded in value frameworks. Really, it's typically reserved for growth and quant managers. But Boston Partners makes, made it a pillar of their philosophy. Why? I believe because it, it solves, you know, some of the things that I mentioned, right? It solves the business biggest weaknesses of traditional value investing. In speculative rallies, momentum allows them to capture upside without driving from value. The volatile regimes, it keeps them from holding deteriorating businesses. I mentioned earlier, like value traps. And in more traditional value cycles, with other two circles, the valuation and the fundamentals dominate, right? With momentum more is a confirmation. So that balance is what allows them to adapt across regimes, a capability few managers, we believe, can demonstrate. And so, you know, talking about this in theory, it's not just theory, it's institutionalized. After kind of our research, we, we've seen every Monday, there's a quantitative system that refreshes over twelve hundred stocks. Analysts are assigned names. They draft their, what they call their three circle notes, present them weekly. The portfolio, the PMs, you know, review this information. They make the final call, they define the catalyst in the names, the target prices are set and then accountability from theirs track. The rhythm's clear, you know, quant highlights fundamental bets, momentum confirms, PMs decide. Systematic, repeatable and bigger than any one person. In terms of the quant work, where many value shops avoid quant, where I mentioned earlier, how Boston Partners embraces it is woven more into their culture. The screen that, you know, I talked about, that's weekly, that track the catalyst, that enforces that discipline in that process. And the result is a manager that blends quantitative discipline with fundamental depth, protecting against bias, improving repeatability and strengthening both alpha generation and risk oversight. So when we look at performance at Boston Partners, it's, they have delivered strong stock selection over three, five and ten years consistently ahead of their peers and consistently ahead of the benchmark. Yes, this past year, they slightly lag the benchmark. But more importantly, they still outperformed most of their peers, including Macquarie in this instance. And they did so without chasing. The short term discipline is exactly the behavior that we want in a long term partner. With risk management, we believe that risk management was, is embedded. Each position is explicit when it comes to upside and downside targets. Attribution is viewed monthly. Independent risk officers conduct quarterly audits and they define risk. For me, what stuck with me the most, the right way, most people look at risk as volatility. But Boston Partners perspective, their risk is more as permanent loss of capital. That philosophy permeates every step of their process and ensures discipline downside protection. Some of the things that are worth noting that I mentioned earlier, the senior PM retiring. Again, we thought that process of him sunsetting was handled seamlessly, reinforcing succession strength. Being replaced by a young, by industry standards, co-CIO, evidence of renewal, but not instability. And then the slight underperformance of the one year benchmark. Again, proof of process, not drift and still better, you know, than, than the peers in every case. And so in closing, you know, why Boston Partners? For us, you know, because their three circle framework directly addresses the pitfalls that have historically hurt value, the value space. Because they're one of the only value managers or one of the very few as an institutionalized momentum, as a philosophical peer pillar and giving them adaptability in regimes. Because quant is not just a tool for them, it's part of their DNA. It strengthens their alpha and risk management accountability. And because their culture ensures continuity, alignment and a process bigger than one person. So for all those reasons, the staff and Callan, we recommend Boston Partners as large cap value manager for the NCRP. And most importantly, we, we believe this partner will protect and grow participant outcomes over the long run. Pause for any questions? Questions?
Questions? One, one more thing that, that I'll just know, just the, the investment management fees, just to make sure we point that out. So they've offered us a tier schedule, which currently averages to about twenty seven and a half basis points. Just compared to Macquarie, they were at about twenty six basis points. So slightly higher, but, but pretty consistent with, with where we are currently.
That's four hundred thirty five million, something like that.
It's about five hundred right now. And then next steps in terms of if, if the board approves these recommendations, we will, you know, finalize the contract with Boston Partners, work with Extodian to, to open up necessary accounts, hire a transition manager to transition these assets over. So we hope to get that done in fairly short order as soon as possible. Those are the next steps after.
Any questions online? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the large cap value management recommendations?
Treasure Brighter?
Aye.
Charlie Perouse?
Aye.
Lamir? Lamir McCree? Not back yet. James Richardson? Steve Bean?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman?
Motion carries. Thank you for the comprehensive report. Let's move on to Goalmaker Glide Path recommendations.
Okay, great. Thank you. So for this next agenda item, we're going to continue directionally, looking forward, right? So we just talked about large cap value and can we improve for the future? That's really what we're focusing on here with the glide path discussion. And just to frame where this fits within the participant experience, glide path, I think everybody knows within Goalmaker, Goalmaker is the model portfolio solution for participants who maybe say, you know what? I want you to do it for me. I don't want to build my own asset allocation and select my own options. I want this service to do it for me. So those participants that maybe want a little bit more help within the service. There are approximately a little bit over seventy percent of participants are using Goalmaker. So this is very impactful to the overall participant population. And we'll start on page two, the next page. And I'll just give a summary of how we got to this point. So what have we done to date? Where are we in this process? Last year, Callan started working with staff on a target suitability. So this is the glide path analysis that follows the recommended DOL tips that were provided back in twenty thirteen. So going back through to say, is this glide path suitable? Is it appropriate for participants? The key finding there was yes, this is something that has served participants well. It was well designed with the information that was available when it was designed. We also looked to see a lot of the participant demographics, a lot of the participant behaviors differ a lot from what we would call the standard assumptions. So there are a lot of unique things that we've seen and behaviors that we've observed over the recent years. We have new information effectively. And so looking at that, we said, you know, it's suitable, but is this optimal going forward? Or do we think that maybe we can improve upon the offering for participants in the future? And at that point, found compelling evidence to say, you know what? We do think this warrants a deeper dive. We've got different perform, different composition of the capital markets. We have again, new information and observations from a participant perspective. So let's take a deeper dive. We recommended to the board to continue this process by looking at whether or not this is optimal. So that's what we've been doing and that's what we're going to report back is the findings of that deeper dive, that additional analysis. We have tortured the data, if you will, to look at this from a number of different angles. I think it's important to note too, we've looked at this from an investment perspective. We've also looked at this from a participant experience perspective because we know that we could design the best possible offering, the best possible solution from an investment perspective. But if a participant can't sit down and figure out how to navigate that, I don't know that we've really helped them enough. So we wanted to take a look at this really holistically, making sure that we are best serving participants from all angles. So that's kind of how we got to this point today. And so we're going to tell you the summary of our, our data torture. So what we found is really three recommendations here. So in terms of do we think that there's an opportunity to improve upon this glide path going forward? We think that yes, there is. So we are recommending a continuation in the process. And we recommend focusing on three areas. We want to look at one, the number of glide paths. So right now, participants have a choice between three different glide paths. So we'd like to recommend consolidating that down to one single offering. And we'll talk more about, about why. We also throughout this process, looked at the evolution of the Goalmaker program. So with Prudential's acquisition, buy and power, some new changes have come into the program. So we've moved from nine nodes, if you will, model portfolios to fourteen. So we have a different number of offerings, which we also want to take a look at to see, okay, what's the best way to execute on those additional options, those additional nodes within that glide path? And then finally, we've got to look at the underlying composition. So we've noted there are several areas where the overall allocations look pretty different from where we are in the market. So we've got some biases towards small cap within US. There's some bias towards non-US within equity, a little bit more capital preservation than some peers. So we want to take a deeper dive there to say, is that optimal or can we improve upon that? So really optimizing holistically how that glide path is built and constructed. The other thing that we've mentioned kind of throughout this study is this is the board's responsibility. So the board is the fiduciary for all the decisions within these underlying. So the board is the fiduciary for all the decisions within these underlying model portfolios within Goalmaker. So this is not Empower's decision, this is the board's decision. So as we think about allocations to growth versus more defensive assets, equities versus fixed income, the board owns that decision. So we find it very appropriate at this point in time, again, taking that information that we have now, reapplying that to say, let's take a holistic view. Let's revisit the entire glide path altogether and then take that positive step forward. Questions so far? Okay. On the next page, page three, this gives a summary of the current design. So I mentioned three, you'll see here, we have three different glide paths. So if I'm a participant and I log in, I have three different choices when I sign up for Goalmaker. I could say I'm conservative, I'm moderate, or I'm aggressive. So these are the different allocations. We've shaded, and thanks to Chris Byrd for kind of highlighting this in a graphic visual form. The the colors represent a different allocation. So you'll see a chunk of blue on the right, which indicates that the allocations for the 2050 to the 2070 allocations are the same. So for a 25-year-old, for a 35-year-old, they have the same overall portfolio. Or those that have indicated retirement and those and those years, they have the same portfolio. So that's the reflection of those new nodes that were added within the Goalmaker framework. And then you'll see the other two on the opposite end on the left side, the 2005 and 2010. Those are also the same as well. So that's part of why we want to go back and really revisit, okay? Should those be the same? Should we maybe vary those? How can we really structure this? Thinking holistically about that participant experience, what's optimal for a younger participant? What's optimal for somebody further in their career? What types of risk? Where should we be taking risk? So really revisiting that more holistically. And I'll walk through, I mentioned there that we have three big recommendations. The first on page four is that consolidation into a single glide path. What we have found is that North Carolina is unique in offering three. So the majority of plans offer one glide path. So participants come in, there's one single solution versus three. And again, choice was great in the beginning, but what we have found is participants are often overwhelmed. It can be confusing. We also wonder too, does a participant accurately identify, right? So if I'm, if I'm not, but if I'm 25 and I kind of find myself being a little bit conservative, am I going to the wrong place? I probably need to be a little bit more aggressive at that point. Do I have that information to make that decision? So that's one of the reasons that we think that the single glide path would be more optimal for participants. Less overwhelming, simpler choice. We've also found that the conservative and in looking at the data, the conservative glide path in most cases will not help a participant be retirement-ready. There's not enough growth throughout their career span. And so we feel like we're not necessarily serving participants as well as we could going forward by having that choice. So the objective here again is to unify, get a single glide path. So the participants and the aggressive participants and the conservative would then migrate to the single glide path, the newly constructed single glide path in the middle. So again, better aligning that option with participants' needs, looking holistically across the participant base and keeping that simpler for participants and also helping the board as fiduciaries to oversee that glide path going forward. So benefits, we've mentioned, you know, again, fewer choices, slower experience for participants, having that greater focus on the single glide path, better optimization, aligning with the board's responsibilities and then operationally much simpler, reduces opportunity for potential errors by having that single focus.
Really not a question, but a comment. There's a a common line between what Empower was talking about with the engagement, what you're talking about here. So this approach, if I were to summarize it is, if fiscal literacy is high, choice is good. Fiscal literacy is not where you want it to be, then minimizing the choice is better for them over the long haul. Would agree. That's the approach.
So then is the answer to reduce the choice or better educate the participants? And is it, is it even, yeah, is it even feasible to really move the needle significantly on the participants identifying conservative, moderate and aggressive in terms of their risk?
We think it's both. And and to be clear, this isn't, this isn't to say, oh, we're going to have the one and then participants don't need any help. It's more for, it's it's more for the participants, again, simplifying. Still can ask for help, still can ask for advice. Those that have five higher financial literacy can also seek out help and build their own portfolio. They still have the tier two options individually if they wanted to go down that path. But again, just having that better execution within the glide path is the focus.
That second point is really important in the way that I think about it. People who are choosing glide path for people who need more advice and direction. And that's what I think we're providing here. They still have choice though. If they feel confident or literate enough to make the individual choices, that is still wide open to them. This is just recognize that people are choosing glide path.
Now, we are pushing them to glide path, to be clear. I mean, there's a, there's a consistent. When you look at the numbers and how we review things and what the board says about. I don't know, there has been a lot of looking at data on how many of the participants are in glide path versus not. And then, you know, trying to say, well, we don't have enough participants in glide path. We want them in glide path. And there are obviously reasons for that in terms of participant understanding frankly of what they're doing. I mean, to put too fine a point on it, but that I think explains it well. I just, I think it's a, I think it's a shame that we're having to look at pushing it all into moderate. And that may very well be exactly what we need to do. And my hesitation is on the advisor side. And I'm retired now, so I don't have to worry about it. But having, having advised clients over the last 40 years, but certainly over the last six or eight that I've been on board. You know, a lot of times the people I worked with, because I was doing retirement income planning, people, you know, in plans like this, and I saw a lot of clients who were state-related employees and who were in the plan. And what I liked about the plan objectively, not as a person on the board, was this is great to have the conservative, moderate, aggressive because not every person born in a particular year has the same risk tolerance. I I wish we could do enough education, bring them further along to really effectively use this because sometimes being the same as everybody else isn't a good thing. And sometimes it means you're really ahead of everybody else. And I have felt like having those three options for people to choose from has been a positive for the plan. So I I regret that, you know, it's just so hard for people to to choose. And and like you said, even if having everything we have now is, you know, hypothetically optimal, if it's confusing the participants, then I, then I guess we pretty much have to move in that direction. Part of this is an emotional response to saying, gosh, this has been a really good thing and a great differentiator. But, you know, if we haven't been able to help people choose.
I may just add something that that would allow for the the choice that you're talking about. When Goalmaker went to call it Goalmaker 2.0 here, they now allow for you to choose a vintage year that is not exactly your retirement year. So if you wanted to express like that you were a more aggressive investor or more more conservative investor, you can choose now a a retirement date that is above or below where yours is. So it said, that is the way that most target date funds and get around that, you know, expression of of risk tolerance.
Oh, for sure. You can definitely say, look, you're, you know, yes, client, you are hypothetically in the 2050 range. But, you know, really based on everything else, particularly everything else we may be doing or somebody else is doing, really, we think you should be 7030 instead of 820. And the 7030 would be, you know, the 2035 allocation instead of the 2045. Again, if somebody is not getting that kind of advice, there, it's just gonna escape them. But yes, that's certainly true.
All very good points.
This is Steve, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd just comment, I I think simplification is a great idea. And I would be in favor of this because and and understanding what Lorraine said. But if those want to be more engaged or active in making other decisions, they still have those choices and can do that. But I do think simplification is a better choice here. And I would support this this recommendation.
The next recommendation on page five, the second. And Ms. Johnson, this gets to one of your points is maybe it's not good to look like everybody else. We're not proposing to look like everybody else. So we did talk about, you know, we could look at maybe just an off-the-shelf product. And we decided not to do that or not to recommend that rather. Because we did note that the average participant, not an average participant, there's kind of two groups. There's the low savers, the high savers. But what we noticed is the participants in this plan are very different than the, you know, the standard assumptions that the industry uses when conducting off-the-shelf product. So we don't want to head in that direction. We don't want to do what everybody else is doing. What we're proposing is to take a holistic view and say, let's get all the participant demographics. Let's pull in seriate of data. We don't get any identifying information, but just going through the list and saying, okay, who's in the plan? What does that look like? And figuring out the optimal allocation overall for each of the nodes. So looking at the current allocation, again, has served participants well. We think that there are a number of changes that are appropriate. We think it's worth the time and energy to go ahead and take a holistic view of all of the allocations and really consider holistically redesigning that glide path. So based on today's capital market assumptions, today's participant information, taking that holistic view and again, recognizing the average participant here is not working from 25 to 65. Most of them are within the system for 20 years or less. So how do we, how do we take that into consideration? How do we account for that? How should that impact the amount of equity they have? How should we be thinking about inflation protection for people at different steps in their career? So we want, we propose taking that holistic view and addressing all of those different components to determine the optimal. So not like everybody else, but but unique to this this participant population. So that's our second recommendation. And then third is along with that, to take that deeper dive, not just equities and fixed income, but looking at the overall composition and construction within each asset class. So what's the best exposure here? Right now, there's a higher than average allocation to capital preservation. Is that optimal? Is that not optimal? Within the U.S. equity allocations, we have a bias towards small cap. The markets have moved, the allocation to small cap within the Russell 3000 index is much lower than it was when these were constructed. So is that still appropriate? Or should we look a little bit more like the market? We want to address that. We want to address the bias towards non-U.S. equity, again, recognizing where we are today. And then the inflation sensitive allocation leads a little bit more towards tips. Is that optimal? Are the changes within the BlackRock fund, where do those fit? How do we integrate those? So we propose taking a look at that and again, re-optimizing there as well. We think we have an opportunity to improve upon governance. So we'd also like to come back with a recommendation for how are we going to review this periodically going forward so that we can keep the board informed? Again, this is your decision as fiduciaries. So making sure that we have a regular process to come back and say, okay, here's the glide path and it'll be simpler because there's going to be the one. But here's the glide path. Here's how this compares to peers. Here's how this compares to the market. And having a regular process, we certainly don't propose to change this every quarter, but just to make sure that you're informed of any differences and that we have, that we do this more regularly on an ongoing basis. If the market moves dramatically, we'll have a mechanism to come in and report back to the board and say, hey, we now have a bias here and we do or don't recommend addressing that. So we think that's going to be another ancillary benefit of going through this process that we can bring to bear for the board.
I do want to make it clear. Really what we're asking the board to do is approve us to engage Callan in this phase two work. As we learned from Rob today, there is no free lunch. So this does come at a cost of $55,000, which the board would need to approve that to in order to engage in this, in this phase two work. Second thing I want to make sure that you're aware of is just kind of, you know, looking forward to this. We did include this in in the budget that was approved back in May. So these funds have already been approved if the board chooses to approve staff to engage Callan to do this phase two work.
Any other questions? So do I have a motion to approve the Goalmaker Glide Path recommendation to engage Callan for phase two?
This is so moved, this is Steve, I will, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. Give me a second. Johnson?
Treasure Bryner?
Aye.
Charlie Perouse?
Aye.
Lanier McRee?
Aye.
James Richardson?
Bob Shea?
And Robert Hillman?
Motion carries. Thank you very much. So let's move on to.
Mr. Treasure?
Yes, please.
Can I make a comment about or a question maybe that relates to this? This is Steve Bean again. We talked about a moment ago with Macquarie and and terminating that manager. And we also highlighted Sands Capital having recovered from the dead almost after, you know, a really bad period and now much better. Should, should we be looking at when a manager outperforms over one to three years significantly, reducing the allocation to them rather than waiting on them to outperform, underperform three to three years or so? I just wonder when we're doing Goalmaker and other allocation models, should we be thinking about that as a a little more proactive decision?
Yeah, so when we within the white label fund structure, each manager has really a set allocation that gets rebalanced quarterly back to that allocation. So for the large gap, it's 18.75% each active manager is of the white label fund. So that gets rebalanced quarterly back to that weight. So inherently that kind of addresses some of your question where manager that runs and does really, really well will get rebalanced back down to that weight and the underperforming managers will get rebalanced back up to that weight quarterly. So within the white label structure, the way that it's been developed, that that's how we kind of handle that. You know, there's no other way to, the way that it's structured, there's no other way to over or underweight managers because we have a set kind of weighting within each white label fund. Now, within the glide path construction, I mean, I don't, I don't know if there's any way to to handle that as well because it's typically set weights at certain periods of time within the different, you know, asset types or white label funds.
I think the systematic rebalancing is probably the best statistical answer to the question over time, given the volatility of those alphas. You just don't, yes, ultimately, things are mean reverting. But the period over which they revert to the mean is highly unknowable. And so I think all the academic literature and practical experience would tell you that a disciplined rebalancing process is the best way to deal with the question. Satisfying that may be.
Yeah, and the other, this is, this is Kevin. The other, the other dimension is do you do it time-based? Or within a defined contribution plan, you have to work with the record keeper to accomplish. If you look at net cash flows, you can, within the glide path, rebalance using that cash flows, if it's positive or negative, to the overweight or underweight managers as well. So that's a topic we've we've discussed internally that will will take up as well. So that, that's a variation on, instead of just doing it according to a calendar. it according to a calendar, you can do it more in real time.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. I just wanted to raise the question.
It's an important question. I wish we had a perfect answer to it. Let's move on to the compliance report.
All right. Yes. So for the compliance report, investment policies and prohibited holdings, there were no prohibited holdings held in the supplemental retirement plans, group trust during the quarter. Partnering executive order, BNY continues daily compliance testing for prohibited holdings identified as communist, Chinese, military, industrial companies related to the presidential executive order 14032. Again, no SRP investments. Managers were invested in the CCMCs for short during the quarter. And regarding the investment guidelines, SRP staff continues to monitor investment guidelines daily. And there are also no material issues during the quarter.
It might be an appropriate time to mention, there are obviously a series of other executive orders coming around, contribution plans, opening up other alternative investments, particularly into these plans. It's something that Jeff and I and I know the team have spent some time thinking about. Over, over the course of the coming quarters, we'll want to engage the board in a fulsome discussion around what those could be, whether they're appropriate. I don't think we have consensus here. And so we're very well aware of the executive orders, but not sure we have a proposal eminent at all. So we'll have future board discussions on that. Let's move on to item 12, the investment consulting contract.
Cover your sleeve. So our contract with Callan expires March of next year. The current contract had the initial five-year term that began on April 1st, 2019. It expired on March the 31st, 2024. In 2023, the board chose to extend the contract for a two-year period. So at this point, the board has really two options. Option one would be to go out to RFP and do a full RFP process for the investment consulting contract. I will tell you in advance of this meeting, staff did go out and do an RFI. And we got quotes back from five firms that have the capability of providing these services. And what we found was those quotes were in line with the fee that Callan is proposing if we move forward with Callan. So then the board's other option would be to extend the Callan contract. And what staff would recommend is doing that for a two-year period through March 31st of 2028. The annual cost of the contract extension at this point is $260,000. That's up about $100,000 from prior. And the reason why that is, is we're bidding, we bid this on a, or got a quote back on a standalone basis due to the new, the new NCIA and the fact that they're doing a review of all of their partners and all of their services. We wanted to, you know, go at this on a standalone basis. So we would have the worst case scenario there. So at this point, staff would recommend that we extend the Callan contract for two years, you know, especially given where we are within the glide path, the study, and what we're, we're trying to get accomplished there. Any questions about the proposal?
Any online? So do I have a motion to approve the investment consultant contract? So move. Troche, give me a second.
I'll second. Steve Beam.
Treasure Breiner?
Aye.
Charlie Perouse?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
Lanier McRee?
Aye.
James Richardson?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman?
Okay. Thank you. So we're now to the public comment period. Looking at the attendance, I'm guessing we don't have public comment. Okay. I'll consider the public comment period closed. Now we have time for board member comments before we adjourn. So if there's anything that we haven't covered that anyone wants to raise, I know it'd be a good time to do that.
I would like to, just something kind of random. Apologies for having to step away for a minute. But I wanted to flag something that I thought was a challenge that I faced with my 401K and 457 as I switched state agencies. I got a statement in the mail and kind of had a little heart attack when I saw my account balance. I moved from state budget to state human resources. And that meant that Empower created all new, a new 401K and a new 457 for me. So I now have four accounts. And I've had to, you know, obviously spend time on the phone. I couldn't merge them myself and, and do that. And I didn't really understand that when I was clearly the same person with the same employee number, the same social security number, same address. I mean, I just wondered if that was something that other same employees may be facing as they change agencies with supplemental retirement accounts and something that Empower might be able to address, not right here, not right now, but is something that we could change because I don't know that that's what used to happen, but I'm not sure. But it just, it's a little terrifying when you have been investing in your 401K for 10 years and then you get it back with one month of information in there. So I don't, I don't know how other same employees would feel, but I just wondered if that was something that maybe we could look at with the Empower system. So personal experience that I wanted to share. And I appreciate all the information today. And it's always very interesting, learning a lot by being on this board. So thank you all.
Lanier, just so you know, that is, that is a known issue. The key on the record keeping system is a combination of your, of your SSN along with your division that you work for. And so that's why when you, when you moved and did create the new accounts, again, it's something that we are aware of. And we've been trying to work through how to resolve and merge those on a more automated basis when that type of thing occurs. So sorry that, 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 that happened to you and then you got, that you got that scare. But that is a known issue and something that we're trying to work through.
No, honestly, that's, that is, that is how the plans are designed. So in the North Carolina plans, we've had like a thousand subplans. And there are about 35,000 participants that are actively employed at multiple subplans. So the plan design of the North Carolina plans is to allow people to be in more than one subplan at the same time. And Empower does not know when a participant switches from subplan A to subplan B. So when we get the payroll file of, in your specific situation of going from one employer to another, it, when that payroll file comes in and now has you working for someone else, it is going to automatically put you into that new subplan with that new employer since they're paying you and it's controlled by that pay center. So that is the, that is the way that the record keeping is, record keeping system is working as it's designed. That's the same manner that it was done on the Heritage Prudential platform as well. I think that where there could be better tightening up of the process would be more timely notifications from your prior employer that you have left that state agency. And then what we are working on with Jeff and team is more of a long-term solution of could you then better automate after a certain period of time where we're certain that you left your prior employer to just automatically merge those accounts? Right now, the process does call for the participant to want to merge those accounts, sort of call and let us know to do that. So it is something that's a little bit cumbersome, but it's, it's working as designed, but there's definitely opportunities to try to improve that over time.
Yeah, that's interesting. Thank you. You know, we talk here at State Human Resources right now, a lot about the state being one employer and what that looks like and what that means. And probably something we can connect with the treasurer's office on as well, just as an OSHR to DST level.
Yeah, I think North Carolina is very unique. And what we say is like, you have a decentralized payroll. So we literally get every, you know, some, some people are paid weekly, bi-weekly, monthly. You get thousands of payrolls a month that we're all trying to manage. They're all uploaded differently from different ends. But that's, that's kind of the, the challenge that's created though, where someone that all of a sudden pops over here and we still have them listed over here. It's then it's how to, how to best try to manage that and organize all that on the record.
Thank you for raising it. Anything else? Okay. Now I'll enter in a motion to adjourn. I'm moved. Troche, give me a second.
I'll second.
Is that it? We're staying here? Want to stay? All right.
All right. Treasure Breiner?
Aye.
Charlie Perouse?
Aye.
Lanier McRee?
Aye.
James, James Richardson?
Aye.
Steve Beam?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman?
All right. We adjourn. Thank you, everybody.